Okay, it is. It is ten oh four AM on Monday, January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-three. We are here this morning for a public hearing for TDJ Properties LLC. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to section eight-five-nine-a of the New York General Municipal Law will be held by the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency on the twenty-third day of January two thousand and twenty-three at ten AM local time at the Town of Volney Hall located at fourteen forty-five County Route Six, Fulton, New York, one three zero six nine in connection with the following matter. TDJ Properties LLC, a New York limited liability company, submitted an application to the agency on or about October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, a copy of which is on file at the office of the agency, requesting the agency to consider undertaking a project consisting of: A) the acquisition or continuation of a leasehold interest in all or a portion of approximately sixty-seven acres of improved real property, being part of various parcels of certain real property located at eighteen fifty, County Route Fifty-Seven, in the town of Volney, New York, Oswego County; and (two) the reconstruction and renovation of an existing building totaling approximately seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred square feet located on the land for the use of offices, manufacturing, and warehousing space for businesses in the semiconductor supply chain and under other industries; and (three) the acquisition and installation in the facility of various machinery, equipment, furnishings, and other tangible personal property. And equipment are here and after collectively referred to as the project facility. The granting of certain financial assistance in the form of exemptions from real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, mortgage recording tax, and local and state sales and use tax are the financial assistance for the property. See, the appointment of the company and/or its disney as an agency, as an agent of the agency in connection with the acquisition, reconstruction, renovation, and equipping of the project facility; indeed, the lease or sublease of the land and facility by the company to the agency pursuant to a lease agreement; the acquisition of an interest in the equipment pursuant to a bill of sale; and the sublease of the project facility back to the company pursuant to a sublease agreement. That is a lease-leasehold agreement that allows a project to utilize the benefits of an IDA. The company will be the initial owner and operator of the project facility. The agency has not made a decision with respect to the undertaking of the project or the granting of financial assistance. The agency will, at the above-stated time and place, hear all persons with views in favor or opposed to the project and/or the financial assistance. As I said before, a copy of the application, including a cost-benefit analysis, is available at the office of the agency for review by interested persons. One other thing I want to add is that the this, the, due to the project seeking a deviation from the uniform tax-exempt policy, the project will not be on the agenda of the January twenty-fifth meeting for the industrial resolution. It will be held at its earliest time at the February meeting or a meeting to take place after that. So shortly, a deviation letter will be going out to all the taxing authorities explaining that. So that's, you know, typical for a project that has a deviation, that notice has to go out and cannot be voted on without having that happen. So at this time, I'm going to read a little bit more about the, what the project is and the cost of the project and what the estimate, the estimated value of financial assistance is. So the project includes the renovation of the property located at eighteen fifty, County Route Fifty-Seven, in the town of Volney, which includes two buildings totaling approximately seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred square feet. The company will renovate the approximate seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred square feet of existing buildings, adjacent roadways, parking lot, and loading docks to accommodate existing and new warehousing, distribution, and manufacturing tenants. The project will help to retain ten current jobs with current, with the current tenants, and future tenants are expected to create forty-five full-time jobs with a future total annual payroll of over two-point-two million at the project location. Project costs from the application are twenty-five million dollars in renovations, a million dollars in site work, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for furniture fixture and equipment, and two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in soft costs, for a total project cost of twenty-six million, three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. The, as I said before, the project is seeking mortgage recording tax exemption, sales and , uh, sales and use tax exemption, and a deviation from the county's uniform tax-exempt policy in a pilot agreement. The impact of the project is the renovation and repurposing of a dilapidated, underutilized former industrial facility, the creation of forty-five new full-time jobs, and retention of ten jobs with total annual payroll over two-point-two million to support twenty-six-point-four million in capital investment. And the project is estimated to have an annual, an average annual pilot payment of a hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars versus current taxes of a hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars. The, here, the, the IDA assistance, this is the, the values of the exemptions over the twenty-year pilot. The real property tax exemption is valued at a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars annually, mortgage recording tax exemption of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, a sales tax exemption of two million dollars, and there is no financing assistance associated with the project. That is, that covers the values of the assistance of the project and the, the impacts of the project. At this time, I would like to open to any questions. I do know that the project developers have, have arrived. If you guys wanted to say any words first, or you want to just open up to questions at this point?
I would say any questions.
You're all right. We'll be happy to answer anything.
Yeah, I would just ask you guys, before you leave, please sign the, the sign-in sheet. So I just want to say that the, in, in attendance here today, just for the purposes of the, those, those who will be watching after the fact, David Fairs, Frank Castiglial, County Legislature, Linda Lockwood, County Legislature, myself, Austin Meelak from the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency, Mike Torme from TDJ Properties, Sean Torme from TDJ Properties, and Kira States from TDJ Properties. I believe that's everybody here. If anyone else is here, not on camera, please, please state at this time. If not, I will open it up to any questions.
I have a question. There's small businesses in there now. Are they going to relocate, or are they going to make room for them? I don't know how many are in there right now.
There's two in there right now, and we're in the process of renegotiating with them their leases. One, I actually think both of them, their leases are up this spring, so we're in discussions with them.
I know there was a couple.
Yeah, there's two currently out there.
That's related to that ten, ten retained jobs is, you know, assuming that, that both leases are renewed, that those are the ten retained. But they're, they're taking up a pretty significant chunk of space, the two of them, so about two-hundred thousand square feet, I believe, between those two tenants. But there's eight-hundred thousand, or just about eight-hundred thousand total. It's a lot of facility.
That's a little over a month.
A lot of facility there.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I'm thinking, in terms of the pilot, you said it's going to be, how much per year?
Sure, so the, the average over the, the length of the pilot is going to be a hundred, they're going to be, their, their payments, what they have requested from the IDA is a fixed payment schedule, not meaning they're paying the same amount every year, but they're, they know what they're going to be paying every year, in year one and in year twenty, and which helps them to, to really be able to forecast as a business. And so the average over the twenty years is going to be one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollar, one-hundred and, sorry, uh, let me.
Look at that really quick here.
It's, the average pilot payment is one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars per year for twenty years. They will make, their pilot amounts will be equal to three-point-six million, three million, six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars over twenty years. That's the amount of pilot payments they'll be making over twenty years. The normal taxes on that, the facility was just reassessed from two-point-eight million to four-point-two. The normal taxes based on that assessed value is, the normal payment would be one-hundred-and-sixty-four six-oh-nine, so their pilot payments will be more than what their, the current normal taxes they're based on in new assessed value that, I think it just kicked in, it just kicked in as of January.
So I'm thinking, that'll make sense, but what do you think the real estate value, and therefore the real estate tax would be, say, ten years from now? I'm thinking that, right now, it's, it's obviously, it's a derelict plant, it is, so the values low, the tax are low. When they do this project, obviously, they're looking to make money. I certainly understand, I have a plan for cash flow, but I'm thinking, how much money are we leaving on the table by doing nothing with the pilot, assuming they still want ahead, which they might not, understand that? But if they went ahead with it, how much will we be getting in tax revenue?
Sure, so we ran this based on a, a future assessed value of eight million dollars. A lot of what they're doing is internal to the building, they're not, they're not building onto the building, they're, everything is sort of within, they're putting a roof on it, they're put, they're fixing the concrete inside, putting in new lighting. It's, it's difficult to say what their assessed value would be increased to. This is a similar assessed value that we used for a project that looked at this property la, uh, the year before, so we're being consistent in terms of what we're using as the, but what they had, um, proposed to do was similar in terms of the, the amount of money being put in and the repairs being done. So we're looking at, uh, we use the future assessed value of, of eight million, and based on that, the, over the twenty years, it was a forty-two percent abatement, so they were making payments of fifty-eight percent of what the normal tax would be if you were to do nothing and the property were to be reassessed. So it's, it's, actually, they're paying more than you would normally in a, in a uniform tax-exempt policy. A uniform tax-exempt policy, you're usually abating about forty-nine percent, in this ba, in this case, we're abating forty-two percent. But there is some certainty for the company in terms of knowing what their numbers are going to be, and, and if you lock it in like this, I, I've seen cases where the assessed value doesn't get reassessed to where you think it is, and sometimes where it gets assessed higher, and, you know, we just, in this case, we, we don't know exactly where it's going to be, and, and you're kind of.
Yeah, that's the risk of their.
Sure.
Absolutely. What I'm concerned about is, right now, it seems like it's a, let's say, seller's market for land, maybe buyers, I don't know which social buyers, but I'm thinking that the value of land in Southern Sudo County is going to increase significantly over the next five years.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't it be worthwhile to do nothing, and, and maybe they walk away when they say, gee, we don't know what the cash flow is going to be, we're not going to do the project, and in two years from now, another company comes in and says, we'll do a project, it's going to be worth ten million or twenty million dollars. I think that's the risk that the county is taking by locking this in now. I know the county's bought land up at the industrial development park, so they're looking to, you know, more demand for property in Southern Sudo County. Would it be worthwhile for us to do nothing? The risk is that they leave, and, like I said, two or three years from now, somebody comes in with a fifty-million-dollar deal.
I, I've been doing this since two thousand and six, and we've always talked about that facility, is that it's a future gold mine, and it's just the right person come along, and, you know, we're sixteen, seventeen years later, and, and the facility's in worse shape than it was before. I mean, that's, that's a risk you could take. You could also have it sit derelict and be completely torn down in five years, and, you know, based on the condition. I would, I would have the, the company answer in terms of, you know, what does this mean for you guys, and, you know, in, in terms of the condition of the facility, and, and how, how does this pilot help you guys to get where you need to be?
Well, and, I suppose what we were asking was, let us get on our feet. Do you know what I mean? Like, you'd start year one, we don't have any leases, we couldn't get finance on that property because we don't have any leases, and it's a derelict property, and the roofs are falling in, and it's, I'd say if it's let go, much longer it's going to have to be torn down. So you take year one, this year alone, we'll be a million dollars in the hole before we spend anything on the building, between taxes, interest, we have ten people employed, which was mentioned there, local people employed, doing that renovation, which we just did next door on the Reselly building. It's now back in the tax roll, and I think, you know what I mean, the county, and it's creating fifty jobs.
And we asked for.
Yeah, we hoped that this will create a lot more than fifty jobs for the county, and based on the activity of people, you know what I mean, coming through and asking about it, what they want is a finished product. So we are basically putting, we're not a big company, we're a family-owned company. We went out and borrowed seven million for the first phase of this project. We couldn't get the borrowed on that property because it had no leases and it's in bad shape. So it's a lot of risk on our side, and all we're asking from the county is, let us get on our feet. We ask for five years, ten years, fifteen years, and twenty years, different breaks. We'll pay the taxes, but don't knock the legs out from under us, because the first seven years, we're going to be in the red, no matter how we feel that. So then the next probably five years to get out of the red, is it going to be a good investment for everybody? We are betting on this. We're hoping the county will bet on it too, that it's going to bring two, three, four-hundred jobs, do you know what I mean, to do it?
Well, you said, ten jobs there now, and additional forty-five jobs, so why are you thinking two-hundred jobs?
I'm saying, based on the tenants and the, the different people that we've had talk to, in, when we were doing up the old Reselly building, we had four or five interested parties come to talk and rent about it, and some of them were talking about decent-sized employment, do you know what I mean? I think we're being conservative in saying that the forty-five jobs, but there's hope that it'd bring more jobs for you and the county, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think it's, it's them being conservative in the fact that they're not creating the jobs directly, their tenants would be, so they, you know, it's.
Correct, yeah.
Right, but, I mean, the facility, the opportunity and the potential could do much more, but it's, it's.
I just have one question. Are you going to utilize the railroad too, or?
We don't know, it's basically on the tenants, whoever's looking at it, we're, we're going to definitely keep the railroad intact, do you know what I mean?
Inside the building, yeah, they're going to keep it in the building intact for the potential. A lot of that railroad is tied up with the, the neighbor next door, in, in terms of that ownership, they have, they have the right of way, I believe there's some, or they own it, but I believe there might be some agreements and right-of-ways to, to be able to utilize it by you guys, but, you know, that would be strictly based on, I, I think it's a, it's a, an asset to be marketed for when we're, when they're attracting companies in that it's a rail-served facility, but it doesn't necessarily mean who uses it will need it. The, the other thing I just wanted to say about this, and, and this, this facility, they did next door at nineteen oh-two County Route Fifty-Seven, that was a facility that was originally built Reynolds Metal, then it became Chrysler, then it became Reselly. I had been in that building recently, and it was in very rough shape, that, it had water coming through the roof. I remember in particular, I was showing a company there who was looking at solar panel manufacturing, and they needed a vehicle room, and there was a big pile of corn in, in the middle of that space, water dropping down and corn stalks shooting out of it from where the water dropped, and they were looking and saying, there's no way this facility is ever going to be able to be used for manufacturing, or, or in a, in a, in a good way again. These guys went ahead, did that project without any benefits, put a company in with fifty, fifty jobs. Now, this is a little bit different, we're talking a hundred, twenty-thousand-square-foot building versus that eight-hundred-thousand-square-foot building, and the numbers are just a lot different. So in this case, they have asked for this to help make it work for them. I mean, that's, these are numbers requested by the company to make the project work. The other thing I would state is that this is specific to them doing renovations inside the building. If, if this takes off like we think, there is other land there at the site, if they decide to go ahead and put up a new building or, or expand, that would not be captured within the pilot agreement, they would have to come back, if they wanted to get benefits for that, renegotiate all over, extend things out, make the numbers much bigger in terms of the, the taxes gained. So I think we're, we're looking at this specific to the project that they have identified. But if there was to be future expansion, there would be the opportunity to relook at it, bring in new, either look at modifying the pilot agreement, or whatever is built new would not be captured within a pilot agreement.
You guys want to say something?
Yeah.
I just, I can't talk with my back.
That's okay.
Um, I'm Frank Stowe, junior, okay? Like, Linda Lockwood, we're both county legislators. This is her district, the plant that you're looking at is in her district, but it affects my district, okay? In the fact that I take care of the whole east side of the city of Fulton, okay? Linda has a certain part of it, but I, I take care of the majority.
I get the best part.
So, so, you have to, one, I don't think there's anybody that isn't happy about somebody wanting to take that and do something. But you have to look at us, knowing that we do things with a little hesitation, in that we've been burned many times here in City Fulton, okay? And in bounding, right? Where people coming in, saying they're going to do this, they're going to do that, get their pilot agreements, get everything all lined up, and then all of a sudden, they say, and they leave. So they're where, that's where our hesitation comes from, okay? But what I, my hesitation right now is a twenty-year pilot agreement. I only see those for solar panels, in that, you know, fifteen, fifteen years of that is state, and so many of it is, you know, the county, stuff like that. That's a little, I hesitate on that. The reason I hesitate on that is, the reason we do pilot agreements is to help you guys out, but in turn, it gives us a benefit, which is jobs. Places, we will have places where people live, we have single-family homes, stuff like that, so that's what our, you know, you guys take care of that, then it comes to us because we have jobs. We're talking, the initial thing, about the ten that are there still right now, that you're looking maybe five or six. But forty-five is what Austin said at one point in time, okay? Now, what I would rather see, I would rather see a five-year pilot agreement, just as you want, okay? But in five years, we'll look at it again and say, okay, how many jobs have you got coming right now again, okay? And if you've got more jobs coming in, then we go with the same agreement for another five years. Because if, my, my mind is, you know, it's, it's kind of old, you know, and so, but I remember that there is a stipulation, usually, that if the promises made in jobs, that's how we're looking at jobs, okay, aren't accomplished, then there is a way to redo the pilot agreement in such that it would help, you know, still help you guys out, but it would help, you know, the tax, you know, the people in the tax area the same way. Now, in there, is there anything about school taxes? Because I know right now, looking at the taxes, school taxes were a hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars on that property. Yeah. So what pilot, what pilot agreement is that? I can affect them as far as the school taxes, and I know in most pilot agreements that I've seen, okay, I haven't seen yours, whatever it is, okay? But the fire departments make out like bandits because they're never included in any pilot agreement.
Oh, the special districts.
Right, okay, and, and that, you know, that's not fair to the rest of the people because we're giving something, okay, to, to help you guys get along, which I have no problem helping you guys get along, I really don't. It's just the fact that I would rather see a five, then look at it to see if, you know, how many tenants you got, you built it up, you know, everything's coming along, and do, do the same thing, but if everything's going well, then that's what I would, that's me, myself, and I know that the people in Fulton will sit, you know, the same way, we're going to give you twenty years, and we, you know, we've given them out to before, and people will, you know, take advantage of them and say, well, you know what, I'm going to walk away now. And that's, that's all, we're happy that you're coming, I'm happy that you're coming. I would rather see a five, five, five.
Well, and again, so, I'm open to anything, but, so, two of the things that when you're going into this is, the initial five years is, like, because we don't have anything in place, and same, you're looking at the same thing, we have, as I said, secured seven million dollars to get the first phase done. So then the second phase depends how quick we can get that leased bodies in there, which in turn is jobs, so that we can get financing for the second phase. So I'm trying to think to my head and self how we would structure it, that, that we're not sitting here waiting for the five years to make that second goal, you know? So say, for instance, and I don't want to get into names, one company came looking at it here less than six months ago, they wanted four-hundred-thousand square feet, and they were going to bring two-hundred jobs. But a lot of people can't get beyond the look, they walk in there, it's like Austin says, and I've been in the real estate for about twenty-five years, and we, this is kind of our model, buy the old one, clean it up, dead shore. People can't see beyond the, the, the trends, do you know what I mean? So this is why, when we were talking, I was saying, our first five years is how quick we can keep moving through the building, do you know what I mean? So our goal is, the first phase is, I think we're going to tackle, because the roof is falling in, the first thing you got to do is, you got to get that. So we have contracts out right now for over three-hundred-thousand square foot. It's happening, we've got the money in place, whether or without you, because this thing is going to, if we don't, it's going to get them to pull, pull it out. So now we get that done, now we got to get in and start building out the inside, and depending on then, how quick we can secure leases, we've already talked to the finance company, said, Mike, you bring it to this level, you get this amount of lease, we'll come with the next phase of financing, and the next phase of financing. So it's kind of a rolling ship, if that makes sense. So when we met with the IDA and said, it's like, it could be, it could be a five-to-seven year project, or it could be a ten, because we're going to have to stop if we run out of financing. And the only way we're going to get financing is to put companies and people in there, get the leases, and the banks will give us the money, and that's, we basically financed next door to pay for this, because we have it finished, we have bodies in there, we have a ten-year lease, the bank says, no problem, that should pay the rent, or that'll pay the mortgage, we'll give you a mortgage there. You do the same with, you know, the first three, four-hundred-thousand square feet, then we'll keep rolling. So it's a little bit of a long-term project, so it's very hard to look at it on a five-year thing, do you know what I mean? But I get where you're coming from, if there's some stipulations in there. Can we roll it into two and three?
What, what I would say, a couple, a couple points, Frank, there are clawback provisions. If a company does not perform, now, if somebody, if they say they're going to make forty-five and they make forty-four, we're not going to, we're not going to kill them on that. If they say they're going to create forty-five and they only create fifteen, then yeah, we can, we can claw back, and, and, and we could potentially even end a pilot early if we needed to.
Right, but that, that is, those are, that isn't stipulate, let me give you an example, okay? Eight years ago, Linda, wasn't it, K and N Foods came in?
Yeah.
Eight, ten years ago, K and N Foods all across the road.
Yeah.
Okay, they came in, promises of a hundred-and-eighty-five jobs, millions of dollars' worth of revenue, you know, money coming in, okay? Topst they ever got to was fifty. So what I'm looking at is, why were they still done on a pilot agreement? Because they're still on, until they close, okay? They were on for fourteen years, though, and within three years, they were supposed to come up to their a hundred-and-eighty-five jobs, as we're saying. So the original statement, correct? What they, well. All I'm looking at is, you know, I know how hard, you know, you have to get people lined up before you, you do your renovations inside. So-and-so wants this done, this done, in order for them to come in and use the facility, or they're going to pay for it.
No, we, we, we're the opposite.
Right.
We, we do it upfront, then go looking.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You, you know, you've got three or four people that are coming in that want, you know, this much space, and this is what they want done, that's, so you're going to know who's coming in, so to the end of five or seven years, or whether it be five or seven years, okay? You're going to know, okay, we've done all this work, we've got two tenants in there now, that each one of them got a hundred, two-hundred jobs in there, so is there any problem with another pilot agreement? No, because you're coming through and everybody's making out on it. You're making out because we gave you the seven years. We're going to give you another seven, okay? Or ten, okay? Because as long as you keep doing improvements, the pilot agreements keep going on, so I do, I, I know how that, you know, that works, okay? So we, we want, just like. So, we, we want, just like the bank says to you, you do this, we'll give you the money for this, when you get done with that, we'll give you the money for that. We'll give you the breaks, the same breaks, I'm not talking about different types of breaks, I'm just saying that seven years from, you know, from when you start, okay? If you've got everything all lined up and everything's coming through, you came through with your 45 jobs, you got tents lined up to get another 100 in there, I got no problem, I won't even be alive now, but, you know.
What I'll, what I'll say is, Frank is not on, he's not on the IDA board, he's not a voting person.
I don't have a vote, I don't have a vote there.
He's been making a suggestion or, or proposal of, of what a model could look like, and I, and I think what I will do is make sure that we take the minutes from this and, and make the IDA board aware of a, of an alternative proposal for it. Uh, you know, I, I think that, that is something, uh, one, one thing I will say about the K-Nen Foods, so about four years into K-Nen Foods being there, uh, they realized they weren't ever gonna get to their number, and they sold about 80% of the building to another company, I-Freeze, who's made jobs as well. So they've, they, they aren't on their original pilot agreement, they, that they, that they had, but, um, you know, that, that was something that was identified, that they, they just knew early on that it wasn't gonna happen the way they thought, so they, they sold the majority of the building, but they still had the same jobs that, that they had created.
So they'll still keep sewer coming, sewer coming, does that go to Fulton?
Yeah.
That go to Fulton?
Yeah, sewer is coming to Fulton, the water, we have to bring in a new water service, we have to bring in a new gas service, we have to bring in electric, because it's, it's all connected to Nextdoor, to that mode line. So, and these are all the upfront fee and if you wanna call it for the first five, seven years, like, you know, you're totally in the red for the first five, seven years.
And that's why I say, you know, I got no problem, and, you know, and Mike, the next one, if it gets in there, then that's where I go.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if you guys are not able to make these leases and bring in these people making these jobs, you guys are gonna be out of business.
We, we, yeah, we won't be doing phase.
It's more important, I mean, it's, it's absolutely more important to you guys.
Yeah, we're the ones betting, you know what I mean, the 10 million dollars, 12 million dollars right now.
And I know you'll work hard to get those people in there.
Yeah. Oh, I will, you know what I mean, and I, I don't see an issue getting that, meeting your targets, do you know what I mean? But
I think once the people see that you're making improvements, then they'll
Well, I think, and you know, not to interrupt you, if you look at Nextdoor, you know what I mean, again, that was all our own money. We put three and a half, four million dollars into Nextdoor, do you know what I mean? And if you ever had a chance to walk through it, you'll see, do you know what I mean, what we've done, but we took that from, just from nothing, and we created interest, which made us kind of take the gamble on Nextdoor, because your first thing is, you know, when I talked to them, they were like, no, they'll go to Fulton, they won't go to the end of the world anymore. Well, I proved them wrong, I proved them wrong. And another reason why I wanted ye, or this, was that, some of it is, the, the taxes insurance account, we gotta keep that as attractive as possible to get them up to 481 card. When I say we, cause I'm, we are totally vested in your community right now, do you know what I mean? So we gotta get them there, and that's what we're kind of using as a market employee, but then they said to you, well, can you guarantee that? We, we're trying, do you know what I mean? But if we could kind of package that and say, this will be, you know, your tax insurance account is not gonna go up over the next five years if you bring X to it. I tell you, I feel like we will fill that, we will explode these, how we water, as regards the headcount, but we just don't want to, you've made a valid point, who knows if you're gonna be here in five years? Who knows, we're now, you know, invested all this money in, we haven't turned the corner or started to be in the green, and then someone comes in and wants to reassess and blow this out of the water, you know?
I didn't, I'm not talking about really, I'm talking about, it's just like you, you know, like Austin said, you're showing that it's coming and you got tenants and you got people on it, okay? It's just like with your bank, your bank said, okay, you do this, okay, then we'll give you that money, then when you do this one, we'll give you the money for that, okay? It's the same thing, okay? I'm not saying anything negative, that, you know, in seven years, you guys, if it's seven years, you guys haven't got tenants coming in, you haven't got things going, you're gonna say, I, I've already wasted so much of my money, I'm gonna leave, okay?
So a bigger problem
I understand that, right, okay? Then we're negotiating a pilot agreement, okay? And I'm not saying that the pilot agreement will be any different, it'll just be a, you know, piggyback on the pilot agreement that you already have, okay? Cause I got no problem giving, pilot agreements, I have no problem.
Yeah.
What I have a problem with is you guys coming up with the people that you say you're gonna have. It's all I, it's all I care about.
I will say
I want people working.
And Frank, or, or legislator specifically, what I will say is that this company has been a lot more conservative than other companies we've seen. They said that it'll create 45, I, I'm confident it will create more than that. Uh, Nextdoor in 120,000 square feet, they created up 50, oh, in, in 120,000 square foot facilities. I think they're being very conservative, I, I see no, no issue with that, I would, I would like to see more, this is what their, their project has stated and, and what they have, have committed to as part of it, and I, I see no issue with them getting to 45 jobs, and, if, if you're saying in five years, I mean, they could probably do that with one tenant taking up a portion of the facility.
Okay, so let's say that instead of a 20-year, you do a 10, but in seven years, we'll take a look at it to see if we, you know, if it has to be re-looked at or not, see, I'm not on that board, okay, so like you, Austin, you know, he, you know, he, he made a good point, I'm not on that board, I'm the minority leader at the legislative level, I will bring, you know, points forward at, you know, at that level, and say, you know, the good things and I'll say the questionable things, okay? But that's all out of there, right? I either vote for it, be voting against it, unless it's a 20-year, is, you know, is the only thing that I could all vote against, okay? Not that I don't wanna give you 20 years, but I wanna see it in equal, is all I can ask. That's, you know, what, we didn't answer about the school district, so
Taxes.
The, the school taxes.
I
You know, I mean, I'm surprised somebody from the school district isn't here asking the questions about this.
Sure, well, so the, we've run the numbers based on the, the assessed value is 4.2 million, we've run the numbers based on the current tax rates, and the norm, the, the current, the normal tax of all taxing authorities added together, this is school, town and county, would be 164,609 dollars, that's all together, I haven't, I don't know whether 186 is coming from that, maybe related to Nextdoor or over.
That was just the school taxes.
I think that might be in combination with the ethanol plant. Yeah, because I think we only, I think our school taxes this year were about 100, so I think that might include, it's, it's very confusing, cause the
I look at it, I look at it, get money home.
Yeah, the two.
The, the thing is, is that the school taxes, your tax rate went down, but your, you know, the amount of money that you're, you're paying out to the school district went up significantly.
Well, it was 100,000.
Yeah.
The, the goals combined was 162,000, because as I said, we don't have any tenants, so there's no mistakes in my head.
Yeah.
We're paying it out of our pocket.
I, I will also say, last year, the assessed value was 2.8 million and the total taxes combined was 109,000 dollars. So it has already gotten a significant bump.
2023 is what I was looking at, I was looking at 2023.
And I think the ethanol plant must be the, and I don't know
That makes up the balance, yeah.
It's a much bigger chunk over there.
Are they, are they gonna be, what I'm asking though, is the school district gonna be included in what are the, what are we doing for the school district in a pilot agreement? What is their portion gonna be, I, I, just because they're not here, okay? And they're on the other side of the river, but still my school district and I work there.
Yeah, Frank, so what happens with this is whatever the total amount pilot payment we, we receive, we disperse to the taxing authorities in a pro-rata share, so if the school district would normally be, say, 67% of the, of that combined tax rate, they'll get 67% of the payment. So it's, it's always, um, it's dispersed in a pro-rata share basis, so, um, now, when it's a fixed payment, it's a little different, because, uh, if your school rate goes down and maybe the county rate goes up or the town rate goes up, you'll actually get a little bit smaller portion of that, because it's on a pro-rata basis, so whatever your percentage is of that combined is how, how it's dispersed, but
In that tax year.
In that tax year, yeah, and I always give the taxing authorities an estimate, so I gave the Fulton School District last fall, a, an estimate of what their numbers will be this spring, when they, when, when we disperse those, so they are aware of what that is and they take that into consideration when they're making their budget for the following year. But, I, I think, Frank, that the, or apologize to the legislator
It's okay, you can call me Frank, you don't, I'm not on the legislature anymore, okay?
That, you know, we, the company understands and wants to have an agreement that's mutually beneficial, that, that is something that's agreeing, and that's why when we looked at this, we said, you know, we want, we need to make sure that whatever their payments are over the length of that pilot, is more than if, if nothing happens with that over there, because it, there's gonna be activity and, and, and new jobs coming there, and, and we do anticipate that that assessed value's gonna go up, we just, we don't know what it's gonna go up by, and that's sort of, you know, the, I guess the art and science of trying to figure that out, but, but I, I think that this is a, I, I really do think that everyone's gonna be happy with the results of this project, I, and I wanna give you this, Frank, this is the company put this together, it's a little presentation of, of what their, what their project is going to be, um, and it shows also what they've done next door, um, that was, that was given to the IDA at our, at our last meeting.
Is that on your webpage?
I don't believe that is, but I have a couple more copies, if it's something you'd like to have.
I have some short copies too, Austin, yeah.
Okay, and, you know, and I'm, I'm sure the company is fine with sharing what they're looking to do over there, it's, it's a, it's a interesting project, but, but I, I will make sure that we take what you've said, Frank, into consideration and put in the minutes and it's, the, the deviation notice still needs to go out to the taxing authorities of, of what the, the deviation, um, model is, so the taxing authorities will all still have an opportunity to make comments and provide that to the IDA before the IDA will vote, and like I said, the, because this is a deviation, it's not going to be up for vote at this month's meeting, it would, at the earliest, it would be pushed to next month to be able to, uh, require the minimum amount of time needed for a deviation notice. So, they, they will all be aware and, and I, you know, look forward to hearing what everyone has to say.
I mean, I, like I said, we're all happy, everybody, you know, even Mr. Ferris, you know, we're all happy that you're coming, okay? Nobody that isn't, you know, cause we've all, most of us were around here, Mr. Ferris was out of town at the time, but, just, and Lockwood and I were here when Millers first came in here and everybody was all excited about that, when the ethanol plant came in, everybody was excited about that. And we're very welcoming, okay? But we hesitate just a little bit and ask to make sure, I know the first thing people are gonna say, they go, well, what do they, you know, why aren't they coming up with this, why aren't they coming up with that? And see the honesty, you know, in, in, in what you guys are looking at, okay, what you've done, okay? Yes, but I'm still, I have to try to protect as much as I can, and that's what I'll always do. But, you know, I welcome you with open arms and, and hope everything works out, uh, I hope you have, like you said, you have people who are talking to you about certain square footage of it, you know then that, you know, hey, debt comes through in seven years, there's no problem, whatever, you know, that, that guy Castillo said, now we can go get, get the rest of the party, you know, the rest of the right time, cause in seven years, I doubt I'll be around, okay? But, you know, all I wanna do is I wanna make sure that everything's taken care of and everybody's happy, the IDAs could be happy, cause, you know, Castillo's not saying anything negative about the whole thing, okay? And he's happy with who's coming in, but, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's what I look at, okay? And what I say is, you know, is you can comment, okay? That's all I am, thank you very much.
Any other questions at this time? There is no more questions, I can call the public hearing to an end at 10:48 AM on Monday, January 23rd, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.